The agenda, Dean.
Three items should be heard in the order in which they appear on your printed agenda.
Okay, thank you. The first item will be approval of the regular minutes of the May 20th meeting.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes are approved. Item number two is application CU-08-4 filed by Melissa Jo Turner requesting approval of a conditional use permit to establish and operate a group daycare home in an R single-family residential district. The subject property is legally described as Lot 1, Block 4 of Country Club Estates addition number two to the city of Salina, Saline County, Kansas, and is addressed as 116 North Douglas Drive. We have a staff report, please.
Mr. Hirsch will be presenting this particular item.
As we look at this property, we'll notice that the lot size is 11,250 square foot property owned by the applicant Melissa Jo Turner and has a lot width of 90 feet and a depth of 125 feet. It is located in a residential zone, single-family dwelling, and is surrounded by single-family residential dwellings as well. All zoned are residential. The comprehensive plan shows this area being low-density residential, which it currently is. The nature of the request in the meeting today is the applicant for the last year has been, oh, little over a year, has been operating licensed daycare out of her home and has been allowed to care for 10 children and would like to increase that to 12 children. In order to do that, she is required to take on another employee and which requires her to have a conditional use permit from the planning commission. As stated earlier, the property is over 11,000 square feet, which exceeds the minimum lot size requirement of 8,500 square feet. So, the size of the property certainly complies with the zoning regulations. The zoning setbacks for the property also comply with the regulations with the north side being, having a 26-foot setback, which is six feet greater than the 20-foot setback required on a corner lot on the non-addressed side, and a 62-foot setback on the east edge, which is greater than the 25 feet that is required, and a 12-foot setback, which exceeds the seven-and-a-half foot that is required along the south edge of the property line. The conditional use, as stated earlier, would allow the applicant to care for 12 children, which is too greater than what she currently can provide care for with her licensed daycare. The health department and the fire department and building services have all inspected the site and noted that there is proper egress and that there is proper fencing in the rear to protect the children and keep them from running out in any streets or in any danger in that area. As when we look at the injury to the surrounding property, the applicant has recently expanded the fence, replaced an old privacy fence, a four-foot wood privacy fence, with a four-foot chain link fence, and has expanded it to, from the edge of the house that you see here, out another 10, 15 feet or so, and to expand the play area. That is the only expansion that has taken place with this proposed group daycare home. The site will have no other alterations as far as the exterior or any alterations to the building. The neighborhood, like we said earlier, is a single-family neighborhood with all of the buildings and dwellings being developed and built in the late 1970s in the Country Club Estates addition. The two streets that are adjacent to the property are both functioning exclusively to serve the local neighborhoods. Neither are through streets. Argon is an east-west street that runs, we have an arrow map, John, we can look at the streets here of the map. The GIS would work, I think. Argon is an east-west street and runs for about five blocks or so. East-west is bordered on the west end by a cul-de-sac knuckle and a cul-de-sac on the east end as well, while Douglas runs from Argon south to Deborah, in which it terminates and isn't a through street there either. So, it's a very secluded neighborhood in terms of not providing services to through traffic to any other areas. And so, that the low amount of traffic, the group daycare would generate should mean that the proposed use would not dominate the immediate neighborhood. That we don't think that there's going to be a lot of traffic, that the only traffic generator would be for the parents picking up the kids. And if you have 12 coming and going, just assuming that each one is a, doesn't have siblings that are going with them, that's 24 extra trips in the day generating traffic. So, there's not a large impact on the traffic there. All-street parking and access. The site has significant all-street parking. As we've looked at with other conditional uses, single-family residents is required to have two all-street parking spaces. And when we bring on an off-site employee, which we have to for a group daycare home, we are also required to provide one parking space for that employee. The applicant currently has a two-car garage that's 20 feet wide and could be used to provide parking for the two required parking spaces for the residents, leaving two spaces in the driveway, as they have a 25-foot deep driveway and a 20-foot wide. So, the applicant is proposing to use the south parking space, which is the one that we see on the right, for the employee with the north parking space on the driveway to be used as a loading and loading area for children, so that that could be easily done without having to cross the street or get off in the street. The required, or the findings of fact, if they can be made by the commission, the commission may approve the requested conditional use permit. In the alternative, the commission may take other appropriate actions deemed to be the best, in the best interest of the public. Staff recommendation, it is a recommendation of the planning staff that this conditional use application be approved, subject to the following conditions: that no certificate of occupancy be issued for the daycare center until the site has had a final inspection for compliance with life safety code and building code requirements, and that no more than 12 children be cared for at any one time in accordance with the state standards for group daycare homes. During the week, just yesterday, it came to staff's attention also that there's been some objection from some of the neighbors, or one of the neighbors, that is located at 2607 Argon Drive, which is located to the northeast of the subject property, basically at the intersection of Bradley and Argon, and feels that the current licensed daycare home has increased the neighborhood traffic and that the children have increased the noise in the neighborhood. And the rear yard is an eyesore since they removed the privacy fence and replaced it with a chain link fence that is much more translucent. He would request that the planning commission consider denial of the conditional use permit application, or at the very least require that the rear yard be screened with a privacy fence in lieu of the currently, current chain link fence. The applicant or the individual in objection states that he works odd hours and sleeps during the day, so that the noise and traffic have been a problem for him.
Was that a written response to Dustin?
Yes, I can pass it around if you'd like to see it. Actually, it was written by me, sorry. It was, the gentleman came in and spoke to me and I wrote it down, so that it could be written and read by you as a board.
Would the applicant please come forward, state your name and address?
I'm Melissa Turner. I live at 116 North Douglas Drive.
Does the commission have any questions of her?
Do you plan to remove the posts of the old fence?
Yes, it's in progress. My husband's in the military and had to leave for two-and-a-half weeks, and he'll be back in two weeks. It's kind of slowed things down for me, but I'm trying to do it myself. It's not going as quickly as I planned, but they will be coming out.
What ages of kids do you deal with normally?
Usually, I do birth up. Right now, I have two up to age of nine currently.
Hmm. Has your neighbor ever spoke to you directly?
Not one time have I ever heard a complaint from any of my neighbors.
How long have you had that house over there?
We have lived there about a year and a half.
Yeah, I thought I remembered it. You've done a lot of improvements to it already, haven't you?
Yes.
It was pretty bad. I remember before you got it, yeah.
Thank you for noticing.
Well, no, I just remember the house.
Yes, it was in pretty poor shape.
Yeah.
Everybody I've ever talked to is just completely amazed by the improvements that were made.
Yeah, a lot of it.
So, you're buying instead of renting?
Yes, we're buying it.
My only reason for mentioning that is, is with your neighbor, I'm trying to sort of balance the two and say, you know, it was kind of an eyesore before, and you've really done a lot of landscaping in the front, new deck. And although it's not a privacy fence, it's, you know, it's, you've expanded the fence.
The fence that was up there, the wooden fence that was there, every time the wind blew, we had to screw it back up.
Yeah, I can imagine it was much better.
Yeah, the poles, I, myself, I'm not a big person. I literally lifted them and the concrete, myself, completely out of the ground. And them were the only ones that are left, and I can't get them out myself, so I'm just waiting to get help on them.
I wondered, John, could you show us a map of the neighborhood, that overhead map of the neighborhood again? And could you show us where the neighbor lives, his voice the complaint?
I believe it's this house here.
That seems pretty far away.
Is that, that kind of earth home, kind of, it's kind of like got some dirt built around it? Is it that one?
Which one?
I can't really tell from the air. It's the one I'm thinking of. I think it's for sale.
I think so, too.
He's moving?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that one's for sale.
One last stab.
How do you think that this will affect you having 12 kids versus 10 kids, and with a helper? Does that, I mean, mathematically, to me, that looks like it's going to take a load off of you and...
I think it's going to help tremendously. Excuse me. I'm going to be able to do a lot more things with the kids. More staff-to-child ratio is going to be tremendous help to me. I transport, so we're in and out throughout the day during school time. Summertime, we go to the parks. We go to, we just went to the library this morning. I try to do multiple things with them. As it is now, I've got a mother expecting, so probably one more car at my house, if even that. Most of them are siblings, so there's usually about four cars at my house a day. Traffic's not real heavy. They're in and out quick. I haven't heard anything from the neighbors. That was new to me, but...
Staff would also note that this is the first complaint we had received in the year that she'd been operating in this location as a licensed daycare.
I don't even think I know the neighbor that complained. I've never even met him.
Well, it would appear that if he had a complaint, he could have come to you for a resolution.
It's kind of...
Also, you know, if you could keep the kids quiet from, you know, eight to 10, or whatever.
We're not, usually even out there, we're not out at odd hours. My kids show up at 8 o'clock. They're gone by 5:30. Normal hours that everybody works. By the time everybody's coming home, my kids are leaving or already gone. So, I've never had anybody complain that we were loud before.
Any other questions? Is there anyone else who would like to comment? All right. Would you state your name and address when you come to the podium, please?
Hello? I'm Kathleen Trembley, and I live at 112 North Douglas. I am Melissa's neighbor. And I am in support of her getting her group care home. And I have no complaints. The kids are out now because it's nice weather, and they're out in the yard playing. They got a sandbox. They got a slippery slide. Just little kids playing. It's not rambunctious.
Happy sounds.
And as far as the fence, that is an improvement, to say the least. I just hear in support because it's not a bad deal.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions with Mrs. Trembley? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Well, there you have it. The next-door neighbor, happy. The sleeping neighbor in the day, who's moving, unhappy. We assume he's moving. We're not sure he's moving.
There are no further questions. We'll bring it back to the commission for action.
I'd make a motion that we approve application CU-08-4 with the, did I get it wrong?
CU-0...
Excuse me, CU-08-4 with the two staff recommendations.
I'll second either one of them.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application CU-08-4. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I thought everything said four.
Okay, number three on our agenda today is application CU-08-5 filed by Matthew and Julie Wagner requesting approval of a conditional use permit to establish and operate a preschool in an R single-family residential district. The subject property is legally described as the south 62 feet of Lot 6 and the north 18 feet of Lot 7, Block 10 in the Riker Manor addition to the city of Salina, Saline County, Kansas, and addressed as 537 South Marymount Road. Staff reporting?
Thank you, ma'am. Chairman and commissioners, this application's a little different from our norm from the standpoint that a group daycare home is a little more common than a preschool application. And it's a little more rare to have a preschool proposed in a dwelling or occupied dwelling. And one of the reasons for that is that the state and health department regulations do allow space within homes to be utilized by a preschool, but they require that that space be exclusively and designed and used for instructional purposes. So, if you want to operate a preschool in your home, you basically have to take an area and segregate it off as your, as your common living area. It can't serve two purposes. But the proposal here is to establish a preschool in a location on South Marymount Road, the east side of Marymount Road. And the initial plan, as noted in the supporting materials, is to establish it on the upstairs level until the downstairs level can be rehabbed. And then, the idea is that the preschool would be conducted in the basement area separate from the upstairs living area. Just like with group daycare, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment and the health department have a role in terms of looking at the safety of the space, the cleanliness of the space, making sure that both the instructional space indoor and the play area outdoor is adequate for what is being proposed. The indication is that the desire is to have a preschool with eight total children, and there are some physical improvements that need to be made to the basement, as well as the addition of an egress window to make that workable. This property is different from the last application in the fact that Marymount does carry more traffic than Douglas or Argon. Parking is more restricted on Marymount. The lot size that we're talking about here is comparable to our last application. There was a joint inspection of the property done by the health department, fire department, and building services department. There was a need for a second exit from the basement, identified as a need in order to allow the instruction to take place in the basement area. The applicant also plans to install a bathroom in the basement. And then, we do not have a completely enclosed backyard with fencing, and the applicant plans to plug in the gaps, so to speak, and to have a fully enclosed backyard. We don't think that Marymount Road would be necessarily ideal for on-street pickup and drop-off. There is room in the driveway for parents to pull in and to drop off and pick off their children. One difference between a preschool and a daycare is that the preschool has set hours and set sessions, so the, there tend to be more peaks with pickup and drop-off at a preschool than you would have with a daycare where it's more staggered. The surrounding neighborhood here consists almost entirely of single-family homes built in the 70s. Again, Marymount is a collector street, but there are no physical changes here that should impact the neighborhood. We're talking about the same situation with a double-wide driveway and a garage, so there should be room to accommodate parents being able to pull in and drop off. I think the plan is eventually to not have the children enter the front door of the house, but to go around the side and enter the basement through a separate entrance, essentially a preschool entrance. One thing we would not, would want to clarify is whether the health department or KDHE requirements would require another onsite helper or instructor based on the plan to have eight children. If that is the case, then we would want to look at the parking situation, make sure that it could accommodate that. But based on our inspection and the information that we have to date, our recommendation would be to approve the conditional use permit request. And we've got three recommended conditions. One, that there be a final inspection of the basement area by a fire department before children are moved to the basement for instruction. That no more than 12 children be cared for at any one time. That would be a maximum for any session. And that the fence sections that are currently gaps in the rear yard be enclosed, to have a completely enclosed rear yard play area. With that, we'd be happy to address any questions you have about this location.
Well, the group daycare could take 12 children, and the preschool can take 12 children. Is that correct?
That's the maximum that you can have in a dwelling.
Okay. And she, she would be licensed to take how many here, 12, up to 12 already?
She's currently planning on eight, and that's what we need to hear, whether there's any plan to, whether 12 is a future goal. And again, what we're not sure about in preschools is if there's ratios of instructors to students that might require that somebody from off-site assist if you get over a certain number of children. We probably need that clarification today. But under our ordinance, whether you have a daycare or a preschool and you're in a dwelling, the most children that you can have at that dwelling is 12.
Okay. And what credentials, I'll ask the applicant when she comes forward. Are there any questions of staff?
I have one. What was the sign in the front yard?
I believe it, it was a for-sale sign, but I...
Sold.
I believe the property was recently purchased, but we can address that to the applicant.
Are preschools allowed to have any signage?
They would be allowed to have a sign on the face of the house, the front face of the house, similar to another home occupation, but that's, that's the only type of sign they could have mounted on the face of the house or the garage.
What is maximum fence height?
Maximum fence height depends on the location of where the fence is. If it's a rear yard situation, the maximum height is eight feet. Otherwise, it's generally six.
So, the 10-foot fence that they're putting in to divide off that area?
I think that's width.
Well, it says eight foot on the north side and approximately 10 feet on the south side.
That's, indicators running length, and the fence would probably be comparable with what's alongside. On one side is wood, on the north side is chain link.
I see. Thank you.
That's the gap between sections.
Any other questions? If the applicant would come forward, state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Julie Wagner at 537 South Marymount Road.
What credentials does it take to open a preschool? Are you a certified teacher?
I have an associate's degree in early childhood education. I've had six years' experience as a preschool teacher. The past three years, I've been a director as well as a teacher.
Would, go ahead.
Where are you going to live if you can't, I know, but my understanding is, is that you can't live in the same space that you would be teaching.
That's correct.
And so, you're using your living room and dining room?
There is a living room and dining room in the front of the house. That will be the preschool until we finish our basement. There is a family room in the back of the house. That will be our living space.
Do you anticipate having multiple sessions?
Yes. My goal is to get four sessions going, morning and afternoon. Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, I would have four-year-olds from 8:30 to 11:00, and then 12:30 to 3:00. Tuesdays and Thursdays, I would have three-year-olds, 8:30 to 11:00, 12:30 to 3:00. So, that's four sessions altogether, maximum of 32 children. But there would never be more than eight children there at one time. And with the 12, the child-staff ratio is 12 children to one teacher. It's my personal choice to have eight, just because with my experience, that's more manageable. I mean, I've been in a room with 12 preschoolers, and I just choose to lower that to eight, because it's going to be mine, and I'm going to do it.
I applaud that. As a school board member, I read lots of things. I'm sure Margaret could relay that as well. In the K through 6, the lower the child-teacher ratio you get, the better it is.
Exactly.
Are there any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Can I make a comment on the parking? I know there's been some concerns. We've heard from one of our new neighbors about the parking concerns, and I've kind of come up with a plan I think will work. You were right about how all the parents would be showing up at the same time, because class starts at 8:00, 8:30, and 12:30, and ends at the same time also. So, I've come up with a plan that I will give the parents specific drop-off times. I'm going, since there will be eight kids, I'm going to ask that two kids be dropped off between 8 o'clock and 8:10, then three dropped off from 8:10 to 8:20, and the last three dropped off from 8:20 to 8:30. That way, there would never be more than three people needing parking space at once.
Dean, could we come up with adult crossing signs for her neighborhood? Watch for adults.
There is no parking there on Marymount Road, correct?
Right.
Okay, so they can't stop there.
Yeah, would not be a place where you could have on-street pickup or drop-off or have parents waiting to pick up.
And I wouldn't want, directly across the street is the intersection of Queens Road, and I wouldn't want them having to park across the street and then cross Marymount. So, I'm hoping they can all use the driveway and...
What about pickup? Is there, there's a scattered timing?
I would ask the same thing that they would...
So, first one in, first one out?
No, they're going to have specified times. I'm going to give them.
Decide if I want my kid to get there first.
Well, my question is, could they expand the concrete over to...
We've talked about that also, expanding to the north for one more parking spot. We thought if somebody made a big stink about it, that... We thought if somebody made a big stink about it, that we would probably go ahead and do that, expand to the north one spot.
There's about eight foot there from the edge of the concrete to the property line where you could put a wing that would probably accommodate one...
Do you need another permit for that then, too?
Not if it's on her property behind the property line, it's just concrete flatwork.
So, if she decides that it, it's reasonable to do that, she can do it without coming back to us or...
Right, and doesn't, doesn't need any permit through the city to do it.
But what if she moves from 8 to 12?
I won't.
I know that.
Well, then, one, one thing that you could do is, is adjust that number in the conditions of approval to say that based on this location and the driveway capacity that no more than eight children could be cared for at any one time. Our, our 12 is, is to try to be consistent across the board, but obviously each, not every location is equal.
That's why we're here.
I wanted to address one more question that I heard about having a additional employee, and I just wanted to make clear that I would not. I would be the only teacher there.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who would care to approach the podium and make comments? Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission for action. Is there any further questions of staff? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Well, I'll move to approve application C U 08-5 with the three staff exceptions, but I would change the limitation from 12 to nine under the current driveway configuration.
I'd second that.
I was going to go nine, 333, I was thinking.
Yeah, nines is nice. Just in case.
Just in case.
Swing kid.
Down the door, man.
I'd second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application C U 08-5. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? It's been carried, so your application is approved. Next item on the agenda is application Z 08-4 filed by the Salina Planning Commission requesting an amendment of Article, I hate these, 14 definitions to add to the list of terms and uses defined in this article. Every time I see a Roman numeral, I hesitate.
I believe it is Article 14, and it's, the way our ordinance is set up, the sections are identified that way. This is a, kind of a follow-up text amendment or cleanup item. If you've been following the discussion, we had a comprehensive review and, and discussion about permitted and conditional uses in the C4 downtown zoning district. It was looked at by you and also the, the Board of Advisors. There was a, a recommendation to, to move some uses that were currently listed as conditional to the permitted category, and then there were some other uses that were identified as, as potentially having impacts on, on neighbors of the downtown areas that would be filtered through the conditional use process. Those recommendations went forward to the city commission. At least a majority of the city commissioners differed in their view of some of those uses, and specifically those were massage parlors, mini warehouses, payday loan companies, and tattoo parlors were identified as prohibited instead of conditional uses in the downtown core. Some of those uses, there were, there were questions about them and how, how would you distinguish between a, say, a massage parlor and somebody who was engaged in, in massage therapy, either as massage therapist or through a chiropractic or other clinic? So, to carry that through, we felt like having definitions that distinguish those, define what a pawn shop is, how a payday, payday loan company is different from a, a bank or financial institution. And we, we list tattoo parlor and don't define it, but would propose to do that through this action. And then the other item that came up was clarification of what a bar is, what a restaurant is, and we have attempted to, to try to take the definition of a restaurant in the zoning ordinance and match it up. To say that if, if you do have an establishment and it has less than 30% of its annual sales of food on the premises, that, that would not qualify as a restaurant, that would be considered a bar. And that is consistent with the, the smoking ordinance, that if you have an establishment and you have less than 30% of your sales in food, then you can get a exemption from the prohibition on, on smoking. And so, since that threshold was there between the establishments that could allow smoking and those which were required to prohibit them, that's, that's what was used to distinguish a restaurant from a bar for zoning purposes. And the only place that really matters is in the downtown area, so that if, if someone came in and they had an establishment they were proposing that had no kitchen or it had very limited prospect for food sales, then that, that would have to go through a conditional use process still in the downtown area. But if you were more along the lines of Martinelli's or Martini's or a place like that that just happened to serve alcoholic beverages as part of a restaurant operation, that would be a permitted use in the downtown area. But, but in order to carry that out, we needed to have something that would distinguish a bar from a restaurant. So, the, the proposal that's before you would be to add five definitions to the zoning ordinance to help implement the actions that were taken in the downtown area, and that would be to define massage parlor, massage therapy, pawn shop, payday loan company, and a tattoo parlor. And so, if, if, if the idea is to prohibit massage parlors, payday loan companies, and tattoo parlors, then it would be good to define what those are. So, with that, I'd be happy to take any questions about any of the proposed definitions.
When we approve this, we'd be approving those definitions and the amended, right?
Yes, the, the five, there are additions, there are terms that aren't defined at all today. Restaurant is defined, but the, the language that's in italics there is not present in our recommendation, that would be to say that any drinking establishment that has 30% or less of its receipts from the sale of food would not be considered a restaurant, but would be considered a bar for purposes of whether a conditional use permit was required or not.
Any questions of staff? All right, I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve application Z 08-4.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application Z 08-4. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion's carried. Next item on the agenda is other matters.
We have none of the matters to bring up this afternoon. We will meet again on the 17th. We have a proposal to take a, it's a preschool proposal, but it's to take a dwelling and convert it to a preschool that's not occupied by anybody. The, the building would be used entirely as a, a preschool operation, and then we're going to bring back some, some specific proposals as it relates to, to LED and digital signs.
Which I noticed a new one, Dairy Queen.
There, there one on Buckeye? Yeah, that's been there for some time, but it's, it's a little different because it's set at an angle, as opposed, so that they, it's a little more visible from Ohio that way.
Yeah, just moving into the residential area.
Residential's moving into the business area.
Dean, is there any way you can get that out a few days earlier?
On the digital signs?
Yeah.
We could try. Will you have that prepared earlier? Well, we have a lot of it prepared now, it's really what, what the commission decides to do with it. But you mean in, in reference to the, to the digital signs, to the districts or to the...
I just wanted to see what the staff was proposing a few days before. Usually I don't get my mail till Monday and if I...
Okay. We can try to get that part out sooner. Or the other thing we can do is, we have everybody's email address, we can, we can email it, and we can probably get it to you sooner than by mailing the packet.
That'd be fine.
That would be all that we'd have for you this evening.
Meeting's adjourned.